All right, guys, welcome in today. I have two special guests, the Mendota Mayor and Councilmember, right? Victor Martinez and Jesse Mendoza. So like every podcast, we start with the Bible verse. So today's verse is going to be from Romans verse 10, Romans 10, nine. If you openly declare that Jesus is Lord and believe in your heart that God raised him from the dead, you will be saved. Romans 10, nine. So with that being said, guys, after the verse is given, you guys will introduce yourself. So we'll start with you, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a beautiful verse there. And thank you very much for having us here with you guys today. Victor Martinez here. I'm the mayor for the city of Mendota.
Jesse Mendoza, Councilman, City of Mendota. And I want to add to the opening verse. I have one right here in mind. It's Galatians six, seven. Do not be deceived. God cannot be mocked for whatever one souls that he will reap.
Galatians six, seven.
One of my favorites all the time.
Well, with that being said, boys, usually after that, we just kind of jump into it. So we'll kind of just flow in like, hey, like I said, like outside, it's just going to kind of be a conversation. We're introducing you guys to, you know, the Mendota community in general, just whoever watches inside the pod with Lou, right? Yeah. So right now, um, we have about ninety nine subscribers on YouTube. So remember, guys, subscribe, hit the button. Follow us all the same handles inside the pod, Inside the Pod W L O U. All right. So first question for you guys, okay?
Yes.
All right. So how long have you guys both been serving on the council? We'll start with you, Victor.
Yes, I've been serving in the council since twenty sixteen. So between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, I served my first term. And then I was off for two years in twenty twenty two. I got back into it and I've been serving since then up to now. I won the elections in twenty twenty two and then I got appointed as the mayor as well. So it's my third year right now, working with the team here.
Nice, nice. Dude, we went to high school together.
Yeah.
That's a little six, my boy. Hey, respect, Mayor.
Where's time at?
Hey dude, we're getting there, man. Like the other day where I was at work, right? And I was like, kind of talking with the guys and I'm thinking like, dude, I'm that old guy now. They don't want to talk to me. You know, I'm the boss. They're like, hey, get out of here, bro. You're in the break room interrupting us, you know? But, um, hey, cool, cool story, man. And what's up? Uh, go ahead and Jess and go ahead and break it down for you.
Yeah. So, um, I started off, um, in twenty seventeen, I believe, right after the mayor got elected. There was a vacancy, so I got appointed and I served out a two year term and then I ran and I got elected. And then from there, I just like the mayor had a couple of years off to decompress, come back. Just recently got reelected again. And so I'm presently serving right now.
When you say recently, we reelected, what year was that?
Uh, twenty 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 four.
Oh, nice. So last year.
I got four more years to go, uh, three and a half about. So.
Okay, good.
Excited to be back, happy and humbled, definitely humbled.
For sure. It's a blessing to work together, you know, with the, with the team and, and we also have a mayor pro tem Jose Alonso.
Okay.
Works with us and.
I think that's the youngest council member, right? In the history of Mendota.
Yeah, yeah. I think he's twenty six, twenty seven right now, somewhere under.
And what, what age was he when he started?
When he started, I think.
Was it twenty one?
Yeah, he was around that age because he, yeah, he served the four year term. So let's subtract the four years to where he's at now.
So twenty two. Okay, young.
Twenty twenty. Let me clear that. Twenty twenty, that's when he started, yeah.
Also, if he's twenty six, he had twenty one.
I mean, good for him.
And then also we have, right, the council member Rio Frio and councilwoman Libertad Lopez. It's a great team, man. It's, you know, I think the, the end result or the vision is about doing what's right for the community.
Hey, Mayor, you might want to bring your mic a little closer because the, the, remember, we can't, they would, we can hear at us is what they're going to hear on the video.
Yes.
So right now you're a little far, but we'll get you in there. There you go.
That's better right now, right?
Oh, for sure. You're way better.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I said that it's a great, it's a great team, working together with Mayor Pro Tem Jose Alonso, also with a council member, Joseph Rio Frio and Councilwoman Libertad Lopez, and also here with Councilmember Jesse Mendoza. All of us working, you know, doing what's best for the community.
Oh, for sure, for sure. Um, like I said, thank you guys for coming on. I think.
Thanks for having us.
This is more like just kind of getting to know you guys. This is kind of turning into at first, it was going to be law enforcement, bro. Right? And then it turned into from law enforcement, I interviewed Adam Pocence AP, right? A Mendota boy who's at Buchanan right now.
Yeah, doing some good things on the field.
Doing some good things out there. I made first team off stage as a sophomore, did a transfer from Clovis West. Now he's at Buchanan. Unfortunately, they, um, they didn't finish, you know, they lost in the semis, I believe. But they are pretty close, you know, maybe next year will be the year they could push forward. But you know, hey, Mendota kid doing some big things out there.
Definitely. I see one of his highlights where he made a pretty dang amazing catch.
Yeah.
I think I saw that one too.
Pretty great, yeah.
They come from a baseball family. Um, I actually played baseball with his grandfather and his uncle. So.
Really?
So they are, that's how old I am.
Well, you know, wait, we kind of could jump in and tie into that. We know the, a kind of a cool question, or I mean, a cool topic to bring up and is that we talked about, man, when I was, when we were in high school, right? Jesse used to go out there and play ball with us, bro, right? And we used to call him the OG back then.
The OG.
I got, I got word today that he's still out there on the courts, man.
Still the OG, right?
Still active.
Double OG out there now.
Yeah, O G G.
That's good, man. He's still out there playing ball. Because what we used to play at the east side park. Now Rio Frio is at the spot, right?
Yeah, the Rojas Park.
I mean, Rojas, sorry. You said you got me with Rio Frio right now.
Definitely, uh, that's where all the games have been happening lately. Um, it's, it's great to be out there and it's crazy because like, I played with the OGs when I was young and then like a lot of the guys I went to school with, or even the women now. Um, I played with their kids, uh, basketball. So we have basketball. So definitely it's like crazy. Like I went to school with your dad or your mom. I'm out here still.
You know what? It's great, man. It's great going through, you know, Rojas Park and seeing the park always packed with kids playing.
Yeah, no, it's a really nice park. You guys did a lot of work there, right? Um, it's like, uh, speaking into, we're going to tie into that fact that we have this, um, flag right here. Why don't you tell them a little bit, Jess, about the flag?
Oh, definitely. Um, so back right here, in the back of us, we have this autism awareness flag that, um, I probably like to show wherever I go. I actually took it to, uh, Washington DC and took a picture with it, with, uh, Lincoln Memorial and the Washington Memorial. So representing Mendota way out there. But more importantly, uh, raising awareness for autism. I'm not an expert, but, um, I'm on a platform where I'm able to be a voice to raise awareness and so that we have better understanding. And, um, recently, um, the council with, you know, agreed to, to do a banner program in Mendota. So we actually raised, um, like thirty three banners all down the main street, uh, with businesses or residents names when they, uh, you know, wanted to donate for the banners and just to have it down the street and everybody could see the banners up there and, you know, even if they didn't know what it is or still don't, at least they'll, they ask autism, what is autism, you know? But, um, definitely, like I said, I'm not an expert on it, but I want to be a advocate for it. So, um, um, that's definitely something that is dear to my heart. And like I said, um, with the support of the council, uh, we're going to continue to do that as long as we can.
For sure. That's an awesome thing. I think, uh, last episode, we just had a mayor from Faribault, Freddy Valdez on.
Great guy right there.
Yeah, yeah. And we talked about, we talked a little bit about, see, I still have his notes right here. We talked about, we touched on the Faribault Autism Awareness. So it's kind of cool how we could tie in Mendota and Faribault. Right? And maybe down the road, we could have like a collab.
Yeah.
Something like where we could do a big and, you know?
Yeah, that, that sounds very interesting. We're going to have to.
We have to link you guys together, yeah.
With their council and definitely see what we can do. Definitely, uh, we need to raise the awareness that it's not, uh, just, uh, because usually it's April's autism awareness.
Is it April?
But, um, in my eyes, uh, every day is autism awareness.
Yeah, no, I, um, have obviously, I feel like it's kind of grown to where now it's actually awareness, right? Before it was kind of like, they, they wasn't really labeled, you know, now I feel like with the schools and, you know, they're getting more involved and trying to catch it early, you know, because there's different forms of it, right?
Yeah, there's, there's different.
Obviously it being awareness, making people, yeah, exactly. So I feel like I was one that I always thought, you know, growing up, my son had a speech impairment, you know, and it could have been whatever reason, right? Him not understanding, but it was just, and we thought maybe some slight form of autism, but it ended up just being speech, but through the process of the education and the testing, right? It found out about his speech, right? And I feel like it's, yeah, no, it could, it's really good.
It's definitely, um, it's not a disability. It's a different ability. So.
It's a different power.
Yeah, it's just the understanding it and recognizing it and, you know.
And we gotta love our kids, man. Every single kid is a world by, you know, by itself. Every kid has endless possibilities and it's great to come together and acknowledge these and, you know, create that awareness.
Yeah, I know.
That a lot of families are going through that and, and stop the bullying too. A lot, a lot, a lot of the kids, you know, when they go to school, they suffer, they go through the bullying for whatever reasons and it's not right. All of our kids, we gotta love them.
I think that's very good to, I, well, the people that are going to watch this, knowing that the council and the mayor is on board with obviously, they're aware, right? That it is happening when kids are on the spectrum, right? And there's different, you know, because back in the day, I don't, I don't know how it is now, but I think they, remember you have to be like, you go to a different class.
Yeah, segregate it, but without understanding.
Yeah. And that's when you start getting older, right? Comes into cliques and cool and who's this and who's that? And, and like you touched on perfectly, Mayor, right? Bullying, right?
Definitely.
Just now, you're being aware, right?
And I, I like to believe that the school systems, back in my time, at least they had flaws. They didn't understand it. Like you said, they would just put everybody in the one class and think, hey, like, uh, different kind of learning, but not a specific kind. But, uh, definitely the, the system now is, is gotten a lot, a lot better, a better understanding. So we're, we're happy in the direction that's trending. So.
Yeah, no, great. That mean that brings up something that we are working on, right? So the next question I have for you guys is, uh, what are the plans in the future for Mendota? Can you guys talk about anything that we got kind of working or future events that you guys are planning on doing?
There, there's always events going on in Mendota. Recently this weekend, we have the, uh, carnival out there.
Oh, wow.
Three day beautiful event. It was packed. A lot of people out there. We have the fireworks show coming up, right? Completely free for people.
Oh, okay. And where's the fireworks show going to be held?
Rojas Park.
Okay.
The last Friday of June this month.
Last Friday of June this month. Okay.
This month.
We'll have to check that day. I believe.
Coming up pretty soon.
It's like the twenty seventh or something.
Yeah, I believe so. I think that's, that's correct.
Remember that out there.
Great event. Yeah, it's a great event. The last Friday, uh, of this month, June, great event out there, family event. Everybody goes out there. Uh, you know, bring your chair and, and your family and enjoy some nice fireworks.
Yeah, for sure.
Free, completely free.
We don't charge. Mendota doesn't charge.
There you go. There you go. Okay, okay. And then, and what else? Like, um, I know kind of, once again, I don't want to.
The Raceway Park. We haven't talked about the Raceway Park.
Oh, what, what is the raceway? I don't even know about it. So why don't you like kind of educate us on it?
Yeah.
Go for it, Mayor. I mean, um, while I took a hiatus, I know when the mayor and the other council members there, they approved the project at the airport that was stagnant. We weren't using it anymore. And the monies were just not making sense to for the upgrade if we don't have anybody landing there. So, the idea was floating around for quite some time, but the mayor got approached, uh, by Ramon Gonzalez and they took the initiative with the rest of the council to make a decision to, to allow that, um, that drag racing and, and even the burnouts now, what I guess what Eagle Field used to have before. So pretty much that, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a great spot right there for, you know, take your family on the weekend, go watch some races. Just that's how you see them in the movie. You, you see in the movie Fast and Furious, right? That's exactly what, you know, happens right there. Those really fast cars. This was the airport and there was nothing really happening at the airport. And for us to bring the airport back, we needed three to four million dollars investment. So, you know, what else can be done here? You know, the Raceway Park is an idea. It's happening right now. It's got events almost, uh, once a month or twice a month.
That's what I was going to ask you. So touching into that, you're saying bring your family. It's a family thing. Wh- when do they have the events? Where can we get it? Is it like on the Mendota website or how do they, who do they contact? Because you brought up Ramon. So do they get at?
So there is a page on, on Facebook, the Mendota Raceway Park. You gotta check it out and, and. Yeah, they'll tell you right there, the whole, the calendar of events, you know, and, and so it's just a nice place to go out there with the family and take your kids to see those, uh, super fast cars. For me, it was really, it was amazing seeing them. You know, I never saw a car like that racing.
Yeah.
I only saw them in the movies.
It's something different. Yeah. Yeah, I did. I could tell you this. We, we did attempt to get Alex on the podcast. Oh. And he, and he's very shy, but maybe he'll see it and we give him a little bit of love and.
He's gonna come in. Come on, Alex. If you see this video, you gotta come here, right?
Alex, Adam, Ramon.
Yeah.
Come out here.
Got to come on. Cause I, I'd be seeing it now. Remember I'm new to social media. So kind of when I look, I'd be seeing a lot of videos of, you know, and people re-tagging and that's a good thing, man. And so I think then come on to kind of push it and give more detail about.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's great. It's a great event.
Falling on you?
Yeah, it's like, uh, it's a great event and people from all over the state goes to that event and including, you know, people from Arizona.
You know why? Because it's not, it's, it's not tied.
Tied up.
We gotta tie it up. We're having that technical, technical difficulties over here.
Not too much. We're still good. Like it?
No, because I think we gotta tie it. I think it's falling because it's not secure. It's all good. We can edit. We can always edit.
Yeah, so.
We're good?
Yeah.
I saw, I saw you trying to hold it up.
Yeah, I seen it. It was like starting to lull on me. And so I was like, oh.
But that, but that's a great event, uh, Louis. It's like I said, there's people coming from all over the valley, all over the state. And people from Texas, people from Arizona, people from Washington coming to, to race right here at the Mendota Raceway Park. It's, you know, making its name.
There you go. It's, it's something small that's kind of, you know, making an impact.
For, for, for our town, you know, that a lot of people, what they do, you know, work, go home, work, go home. There's nothing really after, you know, work, what do you do? Or in the weekends, anything you want to do, people, you know, go to Fresno. But being able to offer that in town is great.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it's different, you know, um, you don't really see a lot of it. Mendota is doing, they're kind of being proactive first. You got the McDonald's first, Starbucks was there first, right? It's coming over here now. I mean, so can we talk about what's next as far as like restaurants or?
Well, I mean, uh, just to chime in real quick, I mean, a lot of this is like, um, you know, we bring all these people together on, on the council and whatnot. It's, uh, thinking outside the box, you know, um, like, what else is out there? Like this racing, who, who was going to bring it? You know, Ramon had a vision. He had the backing and he's making it happen. So now, um, you know, that's what's going on. But just to get back to the airport where we were at and what, like you said, what we're bringing, I know the mayor, uh, we already started planning for a big sports complex also. So, um, we're in talks and trying to make that happen, right, Mayor? I mean, if you want to.
Yes, right now with the state, after a few meetings that we had with the state and the Department of Recreation, um, we were talking about a big sports complex over there for the east side in Mendota. We, we just finalized also a lighting project in the east side. You know, we recognized that that was part of making Mendota a safer place. And, and everything is tying together so that we move forward right now with, uh, with the park. And that's going to be baseball diamonds, that's going to be basketball courts, that's going to be soccer fields, all of them for people to enjoy out there.
Oh, wow. That's, man, that sounds awesome. That sounds like the direction is definitely headed, you know, in, in the right direction as far as bringing stuff to the, the community, the kids, right? Like you said, talking about baseball diamonds and soccer fields, sounds like just more leagues and, you know, things for the kids to be doing out there, right?
Yeah, our, our people deserves it, man. And then, you know, we want to bring the best for them and for the longest time, Mendota has had the lowest park per capita, uh, around towns here, I think around all these cities. And it's time for us to start bringing those resources, those parks, you know, those venues for them to go out there and play. Yeah, we just love seeing the kids enjoying them.
Yeah, no, hey, that's good. I'm, and, and I know just to say you're, you're a numbers guy, right? So I like how you can tie that in right there.
Guy right here crunches everything.
It's kind of, you know, what trips me out is that, dude, we wouldn't, we were at the same age.
Eighteen years already, right?
Yeah, and you're so, just you tied that in really cool. I like that, man. I was tight.
So yeah, definitely, uh, we're excited. Um, we have, uh, monies right now too. We're going to start building a community center at the Rojas Park also.
Wow, okay.
What is it, Mayor? About twenty five thousand square feet?
Twenty five thousand square feet.
What are the amenities? What, what is it going to have?
Yeah, so it's, it's going to be a great, uh, state of the art, uh, community center for our people. Again, for a longest time, Mendota hasn't had one. So we went out there and, uh, as part of our trips out there and I know we being in the meetings, also council member, uh, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem Jose Alonso went out there to the meetings and we obtained the grants. So it's going to be a twelve million dollar, um, project. It's going to have an indoor facility for people to, you know, like a sports complex in their senior center for our senior citizens, uh, a play for the ki- a place for the kids. It's just a nice place for the whole community to get together.
And when is this anticipated to be either in, is it, is it already kind of been?
So we are finishing right now the architectural plans and we are supposed to get started at the end of this year or early next year. It's going to take about a year, year and a half to build it. Yeah.
So twenty five, we're very excited.
We're very excited.
Twenty six, twenty seven.
Yeah, that's, uh, actually like really, I had no idea. I feel like people that are watching this are going to have no idea. And that was, uh, so not only a sport, a sports complex, right? That you're working on and an LA community center, I think that.
Community center, yeah. That's a big, big, right there, very big.
It's great. It's bringing the resources that our people deserve, you know, our, our council wants to bring the best for our people. And we think about what's needed in Mendota, what do we need to fix? And that's why also we're going in this year with more than eight million dollars towards the roads. Okay, we're, we're about to see that. That's the biggest investment that Mendota has done probably in the whole history in roads in one single year.
Yeah, so we're excited. And currently we have the double lane roundabout. It's ongoing right now. And I think the the finish date is when? October, November?
Yeah.
Anticipation.
Is that the one about my dad's house?
Yeah, yeah. So it's going to alleviate a lot of the traffic. Um, you know, uh, once it's done, then we'll see how, yeah, how great it's going to be.
So this year alone in infrastructure in Mendota, uh, we were doing the math the other day. We're close to seventeen million dollars this year alone. That's not including the community center. You had another twelve million dollars there.
That's twenty nine million.
Yeah. Wow. So it's a, it's great, great and great things happening for our city and, you know, for our region here. We love to work with the city of Faribault. We're, you know, can, uh, Mayor Freddy Valdez, great friend of mine, and we worked together in a lot of different things. Recently, we were just working at the Fresno Council of Governments level and, and we obtained, uh, the approval for a set of double lanes between Faribault and Mendota.
Oh, really? Wow. That was recent.
That was recent. That was, uh, four or five months ago. That's going to be a twenty five million dollar project, bringing to our region here, working together.
Which is needed, especially during the, uh, the summertime, when you see all this heavy traffic because of all the work that's, you know, that's around right now.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
As we are ag driven.
And we also, we also work towards, uh, another set of double lanes between Mendota and, and Kermit. There's one already, you know, closer to Kermit, but there's going to be another one here closer to Mendota, which is going to help the traffic as well, make, make the roads, uh, safer.
Yeah, no, that sounds really positive and like in the, in, in, in a safety aspect, it's like a good thing, you know, because it's going to eliminate the accidents, eliminate time with traffic, right? People right now, it's not good right now because it's currently construction. But once it's done, like you said, you, you kind of gave a little smile right there, Jesse. You're like, we'll see if it.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking forward to, you know, um, a lot of people, they just, um, they don't see down, down the future or the road to see how it's, it's really going to impact this, you know, on a positive way. Um, you know, these things are needed. Um, a lot of meetings, a lot of studies, you know, so, um, you know, a lot of goes into these things. And, um, we're very happy that, um, it's, it's going to happen, you know, we're moving forward with these projects and uh, there's still a lot more to come and we're, we're really excited on the, the, in the direction we're going in right now.
Yeah, we continue, um, you know, our vision is to bring whatever is needed in Mendota.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're working really hard right now to bring housing, uh, housing development in Mendota. And at the same time, talk big, you know, that's what about the Mendota ranches? Yeah, let's bring the Mendota ranches to Mendota, half an acre, one acre lots for people that wants to build them, right?
Yeah.
Why not?
The upgrades, you know, a lot of people, um, they love Mendota, their hearts are here or, you know, there. But they don't have the upgrades, so to speak, you know, so they tend to, you know, move out of town to, to get the space or the kind of house they desire in the future, you know?
Well, I mean, I know this is kind of like a hard question to ask and for you guys to answer, but I mean, I know like Mayor Freddy said the other day, we don't got nothing out here. Mendota Faribault as far as like a Walmart or Costco or anything big like that. I mean, with the implement of maybe a ranchel coming, right? Would you say would there possibly be in the future, maybe even like a partnership with the big brands like a Walmart or something like?
I think that possibility is there, you know, everything in, in the future. I think as we continue growing and, and all these communities start growing more and more, I think there's a possibility for bigger things to bring, to come out here.
Yeah, because I think we had talked about here, I mean, I'm not trying to put no one on spot, but I don't know if you remember, Jesse, you know, being a little older than me. They had a, a movie theater here back in the day, they said, right?
Oh, yeah, Ben, there, there's a lot of.
Bowling alley and.
A lot of historic things in Mendota back in the day. Um, definitely, um, things to have some dialogue about and, you know, do some studies on, because nowadays, you know, all these investors, they, they want to, they want to know if a city has the population to sustain a business, you know? They just don't want to just come in and put their money in something that's not going to work. Yeah. So we, we, you know, we're going to be doing studies and whatnot to see if it satisfies their requirements to bring these, these big ballers in, you know, so to speak.
Yeah, no, I, one thing I will ask you guys, because I asked, uh, Mayor Freddy and I, I, and I'm one, I've never been to one. So when you guys host meetings, right, for the town of Mendota, how often are those? Is that, is that monthly?
It's twice a month.
Twice a month? And is that what, every other Monday? Is it?
So it's the first and third, um, Tuesday.
Okay, first, third, Tuesday of the month. And do you guys get a lot of participation? Do you guys get a lot of people that attend those meetings?
You know, it's, it's been a pretty solid. Um, it depends on a lot of times what's on the agenda. Um, some people tend to, to attend when it pertains to, you know, whatever involves them. And then you have your, your regulars that just show up because they want to know what's going on in the town. So I, I like to say that we have always have, you know, solid participation. Um, there's always, um, you know, we always want the, the most to fill up the room, you know, so that way people could hear directly from us. But, um, not just that, but I, I, I like to hear their concerns, um, and their ideas, you know?
Yeah.
And of course I'm always accepting, like we talked about constructive criticism. If you feel it's not working and, you know, you, you got something that, you know, you want to add to it, to enhance it. Yeah. We're listening, you know, because, um, I'll be the first to admit that, you know, I don't know everything. So I'm wanting to learn. And like I said, um, if it makes sense, then let's do it. You know what I'm saying? Because, um, I'm always willing to learn.
Yeah, for sure.
Yep, we want to hear the ideas that everybody else has. So everybody's welcome to the, uh, meetings.
And that's, that's one thing we, we, we just opened up the new chambers this, this year also. So we're excited about that. Um, it was a long time coming and the thing is all these projects and whatnot, it's a process and it takes a lot of time and there's, you know, but they come through. Once you get the, the, the funding, it's just about the process and getting, you know, all all the architectural stuff and identifying the lands and whatnot. And, and then, and then we put the shovels in the ground and it's a go.
Would you say like, I know the other day that, um, Freddie talked about, like, he goes, man, my wife doesn't let me go to the store no more because I go to the store, I'm probably gone two, three hours. Is that, has that changed in your guys' way of life? Like do you, when you say, hey, honey, I'm going to the store, here I go. Is that going to be a two, three hour, uh, trip as well or?
There's always people you, you talked and, and, you know, our, my personal, you know, experience, I enjoy talking to people and, and going out there and you know, Mayor Freddy Valdez, but there's always those times where you got to go and you just got to go get what you need to get and come back, right? Yeah.
What about you, Jess?
Uh, definitely, you know, um, I have to go grocery shopping early in the morning because it's probably going to take me more than the allotted time that I should to get back in time, you know, but, um.
Shop local, right?
Yeah, always. And that's definitely, you know, um, it, it's, it's good though, because um, like you were talking about the people that attend the meetings and whatnot, um, you know, the, the, the majority of the population in Mendota doesn't, right? But when they see you, they'll ask the questions. They'll say, well, how come this?
When are you going to fix the road, right?
You know, and you know, the thing is too, and I'm, and then I see this too, when, when the mayors, um, people actually go to my house, you know, they'll knock on the door and, and I'm at work. Yeah, I'm at work and my wife is listening to, hey, their concerns and she's calling me or texting me and so then I say, hey, all right. Let them know that, you know, give them a direction to where they need to go. But, um, it's, it's about a twenty four, seven job and, um, I'm happy to assist and when I can.
Yeah, but it's, it's a blessing to be able to serve the community, you know, it's a twenty four, seven job, nonstop. At any given time, uh, someone calls, you know, this is happening in the city. Can, can we do something about it? And, you know, yeah, let's do it. That's what we're here for.
That's what we sign up for.
Exactly. Let's find a solution. Let's send someone out there. Let's help. We're public servants and that's a blessing.
Yeah, no, it sounds, sounds good. I, I think it's kind of fun to have that back and forth, fun banter, right? Um, because I, I mean, I wanted to bring on and I wanted to talk about, you know, obviously Mendota getting to know you guys, talking about the plans of Mendota. But in this sense, like I said, I kind of grew up around.
Yeah.
You Jess, like, you know, my, my neighbor, uh, the Joss, shout out, Fave and Joss.
My cousins, Jazels.
They were my neighbors and Jess was, uh, you know, they're their family. So they hung out and I got to know them and then through.
And the OG back then.
Yeah, Jazel Water Trucks.
Double OG right now, right?
Jazel Water Truck. And then Vic, we went to school together. So it's like, there's some, there's some ties there, right?
It's been a while already, huh? Seventeen, eighteen years.
So I, I wanted, that's why I wanted to touch in on that real quick, so I wanted to kinda bring it in cuz we're we're making good time.
No, we're good.
Great time right now. So I wanted you to kinda like tie into your story a little bit. Why don't you break down? You know, kind of, you you told me and Jess a little bit outside, you know, no- nothing too crazy cuz maybe one day we could bring you on for that, but kinda just touch in and let the people know a little bit about. Your story, how you kinda became mayor, like kinda give us from, who did they say, when we graduated high school?
Yeah, absolutely. We, you know, I came here in two thousand and three, started school, the high school right there. I did not know English and and yes, I just kept going. All I knew is that one day it was gonna pay off, you know, going to school. And then uh in two thousand and six, you you know, I faced a lot of challenges coming here, you know, with the family. My parents, I remember the the first uh place where we leave, it was over there by Spreckos on a trailer. And uh that's what we had, you know, and that's what we, what we, you know, built from. And so so we always came to Mendota and grab a burger. That was the luxury. You know, grabbing a hamburger or or eating a pizza with the brothers over there, maybe once a month, once every two months. As my parents, you you only my dad work, my mom stay at home and take care of the child. And uh, you know, working in the fields, there wasn't much. Out there, yeah, so it was challenging growing up here and and then going to school and not knowing English, adapting to the system and. I play football in high school and I was, I would, I could say that I was okay, right, Jess? Playing football and.
You're a big boy.
You could tell me too, bro, right, Jess?
I think I think you heard about me, right? Playing football, yeah, so I play with uh Craig Torres, you know, maybe he'll see this. Yeah, Craig Junior Reyes out there.
Yeah, Junior Ray, shout out Craig.
Shout out, yeah, uh, Tito Verduzco, right?
Oh, shoot.
Still, still the same dude, right? I don't know why Fireball recognizes lazy people. I saw a recognition the other day from Mayor Valdez. What's going on here?
Oh, shoot, hey, that's my.
I got a lot of love for Tito and Louis. I coached them.
Oh, there you go. Coach Jesse, shout out uh G and Tito.
Yep, yep, but but you know, life puts in front of you a lot of challenges and and so. He he brought me here with my parents, right, started learning English and then uh in two thousand and six, I got diagnosed with leukemia. Heavy challenge going through high school and and, you know, going through leukemia taught me a lot of different things. Great things that I I think I'll take him for life with me, never giving up, right? I know we were talking a little bit about being relentless, about what you want. And that's that's exactly what I did, never lost hope and and continue going through school while getting the chemotherapy.
Yeah, I I I think I was telling you outside, like, your story is like really about faith, bro. You know, faith, having faith the whole time cuz three and a half years of what you described outside, I know that. You come on the podcast and cuz when you're told, when you're talking the first time, right, it comes out natural. And that was, you totally good, bro. You had me and Jess almost.
I was gonna write a book and make a movie. I mean, it's so inspirational, you know, the faith and the inspiration and then. Like you said, through all the trials and tribulations and then to where he's at now. You know, helping lead a a community, you know, to to be, to be more oppo- opportunistic and, you know, positive and and inspiring them to. To let them know that, like you said, relentlessness, that, hey, whatever's put in front of you. Is gonna get tired of you pushing it around if you keep showing up every day, so you're gonna knock that wall down and keep on going down the path. But it's up to you, you know, to to attain those goals and reach where you wanna get to. Like Victor said, he never lost that fighting spirit in him. And and that's that's a little bit of what we all should have. We all have it, it's just we use it, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, like Victor said, it's it's an inspiration and it's, you know, just wanting to keep keep fighting, keep going because. You don't wanna lose.
Exactly, and and check this out, you know, going through the experience of that, you know, I I remember one night, one of many stories that I had, right? One night devastated in the hospital, it was close to December, I think it was late November. Two AM in the morning, three AM in the morning, someone showed up. It was a lady without legs and and no arms. And then she told me, what's going on, Victor, what's going on with you, right? Then I said, look at me, I'm already, I'm done. From being two hundred and eighty five pounds in high school, going down to like two twenty, two thirty. Super skinny guy, uh, you know, all the muscle that, all the hard work, it was gone already. And then she told me, you're gonna, one day you're gonna get out of this, right? And I'll never be able to walk again. I'll never be able to have hands again. That just goes to tell you that there's people out there that's fighting bigger fights. They, you know, and and we have to be understanding and there's a, there's a, I I think in in the world, there's. That lack of that, you know, being uh having empathy, understanding for people. We are really quick to judge people, but we never take a minute and stop and say, what is this person going through? Let me, let me try to understand them.
That's very true. I mean, I think that's a, that kind of approach comes with maturity though, you know, cuz you know, when you and I'm. I can tie it into religion, right? I would say, cuz this podcast is mainly about pushing God's word too, right? And my favorite verse, I didn't say it with with the Mayor Freddy Valdez, but I wanna say it here cuz, you know, we're all from Mendo right here, right? But my favorite verse, Isaiah sixty twenty two, so when the time is right, I, the Lord, will make it happen, right?
Absolutely, and and that goes back that also, you know, into. When you're living through life, right, and when you're going through all these challenges, you don't connect the dots.
I remember you did say that outside.
Yeah, and and when you look back and you see all those dots connect together.
Yeah, it's like you don't see it right now, but three fourths, you know, you'll be like, oh, wow.
God has a plan, right? And and that's what I tell also, you know, a lot of the kids that are, right now is a perfect timing. Kids are going to school right now, they're graduating.
Yeah, graduate, it's graduation week.
Graduation week, congratulations to all the graduates and and.
Twenty twenty five, congratulations.
That's crazy to say, huh, twenty twenty five.
And you're gonna, these these kids, you know, they're gonna find challenges in their life. Yes, I remember going to school myself when I first, when I was doing my bachelor's degree in mathematics, you know, and going through chemotherapy. Sometimes I didn't know what I was doing, what I was doing. I'm here, you know, I could die tomorrow if this thing goes south, but I'm gonna keep fighting. I'm gonna continue moving forward, you know, and and. Down the line, it paid off. So I graduated from West Hills in two thousand and ten. And then went to Fresno State in two thousand uh twelve, fourteen, I'm sorry, graduated with a degree in mathematics and. Went back and got my degree in master's degree in business. And now I connect the dots, right, and I see, okay, why?
God is good.
God is good. It's been uh twelve, thirteen years already.
Since you've been in, um. Is it, what do they call it, remission?
Clean, yeah, remission, yeah, clean from from leukemia and I'm blessed, you know. I'm blessed that God gave me the opportunity to be here and and blessed to give me the opportunity to serve.
For sure, no, heck, yeah. My question to you now, I wanna kinda tie in is when you're going through that, right? And you, cuz I think outside, I'm gonna tie it back in, it's like, remember you said you almost felt like I already accepted death? How is your relationship like that right there in that moment with the Lord?
Yeah, it it, so it gets to a point, right, that that you almost, eh, I I think I remember that I did accept the death. Uh, I was so bad in pain one night that at some point, you know, you just. Uh, at that moment, that relationship with the Lord is beautiful. Cuz it's almost seems you accepted him and Jesus, take me, you know, if that's your will, I'm here. You're you're now just waiting for him to take you. And that's the end of the, you know, the whole thing there. So it's it's a very calm, uh, very, you know, relaxed.
You know, it's.
Peaceful, you you feel a lot of peace cuz the fight stops. The fight stops that that, man, I don't wanna die and then what's going on and and with me and. But the moment you say, okay, if it's God's will, take me, then the fight stops and then you just let it go, right? And then you you have another feeling, but then that wasn't God's will for me, so I came back. And I'm blessed, yeah.
It's, that's a great story right there. Very inspirational, you know, um, it it's kinda like, the reason I ask you that is because when I started kinda getting closer to the Lord. I've never heard him speak to me. I've never physically heard his voice, you know, but I tell people like.
You feel it.
Yeah, it's like he put it on my heart, like, remember we talked about spirit, right? Holy Spirit, I feel like something's tugging me, like, don't do this or or do this or you need to go this way, back to the dots. Cuz right now I s- like, all right, now it's happening, I manifest it, like, I wanted to do a podcast in twenty nineteen. You know, and it's like, but when I wanted to do it the way I wanted to do it, what I was thinking, I never, I could have never imagined bringing on. The mayor and the council member of Mendota when I first thought of Inside the Pawaloo. But it's, like you said, God aligns for a reason.
I I remember when, um, I just seen a couple of your episodes where, you know, you were on the scene on deck, right, and I was like. Am I worthy? Is you could give me a call one day and let me be on that show? I wanna talk.
I I was really happy for you when I heard that you had got it and obviously same to you, like when people were like, oh, you know Victor, I was like. I know Victor really well, I went high school with him, you know, and it's like, I liked it that when I, when I met you, bro, first day, you're, hey, what's up, bro, you shook my hand, you gave your number, so. Same thing when I called you, when I reached out to you, you're like, hey, yeah, and it's like, it comes back down to your connections, your ties, like, we're from, we're from where we're from. I tell everybody, bro, I'm from Mendo, like, yeah, I live in Farbo.
I seen you grow up, man.
But I'm from Mendota, bro, it's in my heart and then what, it's kinda. Yeah, what kinda crazy is like, I told you guys off camera, what I have an opportunity to possibly do one, like, soon, you know, and if I could do that, bro, like. It's crazy how, once again, God. Because I wasn't mature enough ten years ago to do it. But I was mature enough ten years ago to be a CEO, to learn, put myself in, you know, position.
God puts you in places, uh, brother, that, you know, you you have to execute at that point, right? And that's the opportunity that we got us here to be in the place of a public servant and. Now with so many different things going on and at the state level and at the federal level, it's time for us to execute, it's time for us to act, you know? It's time to uh for us to send messages and and to, you know, up there and say, this can't happen in our city.
Yeah, to be the voice.
Be the voice for. Be the voice.
Yeah, well, I mean, and I mean, I don't wanna put you on the spot here, but, cuz I mean, you're doing a great job. Do you ever see yourself in a a future with politics?
You know, I I don't discard it. I don't discard it. I think at some point.
We're still semi young.
Yeah, but but I think down the line, yes, you know, I see myself continue serving at a higher.
Don't forget us, don't forget Inside the Pawaloo, my boy.
They will be watching these podcasts later on, right? But right now, I think, you know, I'm raising a family and and my little boys and uh.
How many children do you have?
Got two kids.
Okay, congratulations. You have a son, daughter?
Two boys.
Two boys? How old are they?
Four and uh, four and a half and and uh, one and a half.
Nice, congra- and what about you, Jess?
Yeah, I got two girls, three boys.
Nice, and ages?
Thirty two.
Nice, it's all good.
Sixteen to fifteen, yeah.
There you go. I mean, I have sixteen and six, so I, you know, it's a gap.
There's a big gap. But it's it's, they're a blessing, uh, definitely, um, you know. It it's a blessing every day. A lot of people, they they're like, oh, man, Jess, you're old. I'm like, man, you know what? I'm I'm blessed.
Exactly.
A lot of people, they don't make it to be where I'm at my age. And and still be able to play basketball.
That's a big, that's a big flex and a big blessing.
You know, but definitely, you know, all glory to God, to God, I'm a God fearing man first and foremost.
For sure.
Um, I'm not, I'm far from perfect, but um, I repent and and I ask for forgiveness, man, and uh. Every day's a new start and I try to be the best person that I can that day, you know?
Living life with purpose, right? That's very important.
I think that's what it's about, especially how he touched on repenting and trying to let God know we're not perfect, but we're trying, right? We're putting in our cross, we're taking our steps, we're gonna fall, you know? It's about, I think you said right now, you touched into it again, it's about your purpose, what's your purpose, what's your intent?
Walk with the purpose.
And I feel like if you're attempting every day and then you're giving him the glory, you're talking about him, you, once again, you make a mistake, we fall. You go back to him and then acknowledge him cuz when you're, I think what with with sin, at least to me, is when we could fall. It just continues to just drag downhill and you never go back to God, so then you just stay in it, you know, and I feel like. Coming from Mendota, I see a lot of it with family, friends, you know, um, just people in general, and I feel like. When they see people like us and they see this podcast there, they could be like, maybe it'll be someone to come up to one of us on the street and be like, hey, I saw that podcast, I saw that you guys were talking about God and. You know, I appreciate that.
Never giving up, talk about God and the purpose of life, right?
There's no shame in in in, you know, giving glory, you know, to our Lord and Savior. Like I said, we're not perfect by any means, but you know, um, you don't have to be perfect. To walk through the gates of, the purely gates of heaven to be on the book of life, you you just need to be able to repent and ask for forgiveness, you know? And recognize, you know, that you are a sinner, like I said, um. You know, religiously, I don't, I wanna say, hey, I'm, like I said, I'm by the book or whatnot, but um, I do know that, hey, um. Jesus forgives, you know?
Yeah, no, for sure. Same here, like I said, I didn't grow up. In a church, I didn't grow up going to church, but, uh, you know, I found God differently, like, honestly, hearing your story outside, bro, and I'm gonna tie it in right now, what it made me feel was like. Man, God, you're so good, you know, because my problems were nowhere near.
Talk about challenges, huh?
And the the crazy part of what I wanna tie into and it kinda, that's why it comes back down to like, um, everybody is different. I was literally like putting myself in a depression cuz of what I thought, what I had to go through, which again, was nowhere near the pain. That other people are going through, right, their walk, but yeah, God still gave me his grace, you know, he still allowed me to. Understand my feelings, even though that I was all self-induced, but I was never saved. But then as I came to him, now me and you share the same, you know, love with God, but at the same time. Your story's very, you know, more inspiring and you had to go through way more difficulties than I had to.
But you know, you know what the beauty of of life is and the beauty of the opportunity that God gives us is that we can help so much people. We can really touch on so many souls, so many people in many different ways.
Politics aside, I honestly feel that that's why we connect right now. Because I feel I'm the same, bro, this podcast, what I am now, what I'm trying to do, I wanna give back. I wanna help them, I wanna help the little Mendola boys out there, the little Farbo boys, the tranquility boys, the Dos Paulos boys that don't have what we, you know.
And helping people starts with, hey, how are you?
Exactly.
I hope you have a great day.
Yeah, it's and it's just like, but not about the children, it's it's about the men and women too, you know, that's where it starts, under the household, under the roof. The parents, you know, or the parent, you know, the the influencers, those are the number one, you know, and and then it goes, you know, you you. You wanna enhance them and give them better opportunities so they could give better opportunities to their children, you know, so. And it's never been about, uh, like, like you guys said, it's never been about politics, you know, cuz. We're on the council, but we're here to serve the community, you know what I'm saying?
You did it for a reason. We talk about purpose, you know, what's the purpose of being on it? It's to help people.
It's to help people and like I said, you can help people in so many different ways. It's, it it starts with uh simple, you know, hey, how are you? Good to see you, you know, I hope you're doing great. I hope you have a great day today. You know, talking to a kid, they never give up, okay, you're a champion, things like that. They go a long way, say, why did this person told me I was a champion?
Like, one thing I wanna, I wanna tie into real fast, um, Mendola Boys Varsity just lost in the Valley. But I wanna give them props because, you know, those boys battled adversity to get to the championship, right? And it's not about, like you said, it's not about the that game per se. It's what they learned and they battle back next, dude, they continue to go and work hard, watch, they're gonna, those boys are gonna do good things. I hear nothing but good things about those kids, you know? So I just wanted to give them a shout out on the podcast. So, congratulations, boys, you know, proud of you guys. And maybe, like I said, going forward, um, that that'll be the stepping stone, right? Hey, we got to the Valley Title Game, you know? They're gonna set the mark now, the 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 mark is set with those boys now, so it's like, nothing to hang your head on, like, yeah, we got there, we didn't finish, but that's life sometimes, right? Hey, you reset, get back up, how you gonna finish, right?
And and just the relationships that they built on that team and with their coaches, uh, those. Those those experiences will never be forgotten the rest of their lives, win or lose, I mean, you're always gonna be tied to. The guy who was your catcher, to the pitcher, to the center fielder, the time he made that catch, or did you see the one he hit out of the park? You know, or they see, you know, I mean, you just will always relive those moments and have something to talk about when when you get back together like this, when we're at. This age, you see what I'm saying, so. It's just, it's great to continue to have that camaraderie and that that tie together forever, you know, so that's, it's builds a lot of character and. Cohesiveness, you know what I'm saying? So, uh, a lot of character comes out in winning and in losing, so. Uh, continue to to fight, you know, and then if you didn't like that feeling and if you're out of school, that was your last year, then you say, you know what, that sucked. But you know what, I'm gonna continue to better myself in other ways cuz, you know, I might not be a pro baseball player, but I could be a pro something else, you know, a doctor, a lawyer. You know, anything.
Take those lessons. Those lessons you learn in sports are so valuable. You know, you take those lessons forever.
Because it teaches, we said it earlier, teamwork.
Never give up, you know, it it teaches you that you can get better and better and better and the competition, right? Very important in life. Not competing about other people, but competing within yourself.
And the thing that people gotta understand is like, on a team, right, you win, right, as a team. And the thing that people gotta understand is like, on a team, right, you win, right, as a team, but there's always gonna be that one player that just excels. Because that's just part of it, but you, he wouldn't, we wouldn't win without him, but then he wouldn't win without us. And that's part of being a team.
I, I'll give you, I'll give you an example, I mean, Jordan, as great as he was, you know what I'm saying?
He needed Pippen, dude.
He needed Pippen, but look, he needed a Rodman too to do the dirty work.
There you go.
See what I'm saying? Who got, who got the team those extra shots, you know what I'm saying? The guy that didn't wanna take the shot, he just wanted to bang in there and get those boards.
Yep.
And, and, and be the, the ultimate team player and, and sacrifice his, his body and everything he was good at to give someone else an opportunity.
Yeah.
So that he could ultimately be in the team picture as a champion, to be part of a team. You know, you don't always have to take the shots, you know? But you, you, you play your role and what you're good at and you make those sacrifices within yourself, you have to humble yourself sometimes so that you can make the team great, so that you guys can win. The common ground on the team is to win, you know, no matter what role you play, play it well and, and do it and be humble about it, you know, like like you said, we're not all gonna be the superstar on the team, but someone's gotta open up that hole in the field so the running back could run through it or hold the line so the quarterback could throw the pass, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You kinda get me, so it, it, it all adds up and there's always someone for it, and like I said, you will never be forgotten when you guys hang out again and and talk about it.
And then for the, for the younger crowd out there, Rodman will tie into Draymond Green.
There you go.
So
That's about as close as there is.
I mean, I, I, I get it, you know, Rodman, you know, we're at that age, but there's some of these youngsters now, Draymond Green.
Yeah, Draymond Green.
Yeah, the way he's trying to, yeah.
Sometimes Steph misses and he needs an extra shot.
There you go. Yeah, and also, um, let me see, let me, what was the last question I wanted to ask, cuz we're kinda getting we're making good time, it's going real good.
We're good.
Uh, wanna say, the last one I had was just about events, like future events, we kinda already talked about it though, um, you, the, we talked about the raceway, we talked about the twenty-seventh with the fireworks show coming up.
Yes, big time right there.
Um
Toy giveaway in December.
Toy giveaway in December.
Okay, toy giveaway in December.
We do a Christmas toy giveaway in December, all kids, you know, everybody that shows up gets a toy.
Shout out to our sponsors, everybody who always supports us. We appreciate you guys, without you guys
Is there a lot of local businesses?
Yes, I mean, we got a list, I don't know.
Yeah, the, the Yamas family, they, they donated uh, the toys ten thousand dollars last year.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's great. Uh, and, but everybody, you know, it's a teamwork.
Yeah, no, no, for sure. I mean, we went over every list, we probably be here the whole podcast, but yeah, no, for sure, shout out to everyone that does do that, maybe soon when Inside the Pawaloo gets a little bigger, I'm gonna get B and T to get in there too, I got my father's uh trucking company, um, I can talk to uh, my stepmom, her brother has a
AC.
AC, Bill Davis here in town, always likes to give back, the beauty of me is I can network, so I, working where I'm at now, I met, you know, some people, the uh, Cardella Winery, Nathan Cardella, can give him a little call out there.
Yep.
Um, there's a couple of the people, right? And so I, I mean, I'm now
He's better and bigger.
Always, the one thing I always say that God, prior to this, is that the kinda, about the puzzle, I never done sales. I had never, no, knew anything about cars, but yeah, like, I'm over here running a spot.
You're not real salesman.
Yeah, and so now, I feel like that can tie into, if I do end up places, hey, we need sponsors, let me go out and talk to
We, we need you to run for, for someplace right there, right?
I mean, it, it's, the one thing, like you guys said, I could see it in you guys, bro. You guys talk about your town, you guys, you know, even off camera, it's, the passion is there. I would, I gotta get that kinda passion for, and I, and I'm saying it's not there right now.
You have it.
Um, it's just gotta, it's gotta be redirected right now, cuz right now, it's, I'm battling time. Cuz I go to my schedule, I'm saying, I'm gone all day, bro, I mean, if I were being, once again, Isaiah sixty twenty-two, when the time is right, the Lord will make it happen.
Yep.
If the Lord blesses me with a good schedule, maybe like a teaching schedule.[1613.39]